Gentlemen, you ready?
Just hit the gamut.
I call the Patton Township Board of Supervisors April 13, 2022, meeting at 5:30 to order. Announcements. Welcome, especially new Patton Township residents, to the Patton Township commu- community. A place for all. Are there any announcements, Doug?
No, no announcements.
Okay. As you are able, please rise and join the board in the flag of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next on the agenda is additions to the posted agenda. Are there any items or items that the supervisors would like to add to the posted agenda at this time? Doug, seeing none, moving on to public comment. Residents and taxpayers may address the board on issues of interest to the township. Comments related to specific agenda items should be deferred until that point in the meeting. If you are attending or on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature on the Zoom application and wait for the chair to indicate it is your opportunity to speak. If you are attending in person, please approach the podium and wait for the chair to indicate it is your opportunity to speak. Please be respectful and defer from using any profanity, derogatory, or any offensive language, any gestures, abbreviations during the meeting. Respect is always given by this board and expect the same in return. Public comments are limited to five minutes per person. Moving on, next on the agenda, presentations, public hearings, first on the agenda.
Do you want to speak?
Yeah, would this be broken?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just go up to the podium, please.
Evening, my name is Barrett Feinberg out of Park Forest. Did several planning commission meetings that are addressing ADUs, as you like to call them, I call them affordable housing or forced housing. This, this go around is pretty much a recycle, rebranded initiative as was done, I believe it was 2019, a year and a half ago. Most of the folks that I see in front of me now were on the board at that time, and I'm sure you remember the overwhelming response that you got, and it wasn't in favor of moving forward with this project. It's a little disappointing, a little surprising, that the initiative resurfaced without the public being advised that it's being resurfaced. At the last planning commission meeting, Mr. Burnett asked several questions of, I believe her name is Nicole Pollak, to make sure that they were in compliance. By compliance, compliance to me is different than notifying your public as to what's going on. Somebody mentioned that the residents should be checking the website. I got to tell you, your website's better than it was, but it's not on the top 10 reading list of the New York Times. Most people don't even go to the website. Unfortunately, several people that I have talked to who go to the website, using their terms, find it a little clunky. It's not easily navigable. I would disagree with that on most occasions, but this is an issue that was very well fought last time by a majority of your residents. For it to be brought up again with a new name and not being made public is kind of disappointing. There should have at least been, I would say, a letter that was sent out, that, that should have been sent out, as was done the last time, to the residents that were impacted. There was a survey that was sent out, that was available to residents to again voice their opinion. And I don't care what non-residents do, I don't care what they do in the borough, I don't care what they do in college or Ferguson. I chose to live in Patton, and if I want to go to Disneyland, I'll go to the borough. This is, this is an area that many young families buy into for a certain reason. It's a family residential area, that's what Jay Alvin developed it as. To take it and develop duplexes or ADUs is a far stretch from a single-family neighborhood. It changes the whole dynamics of the neighborhood, it changes the amount of traffic, it changes the, everything about the neighborhood. It's not uncommon to see young children playing in the yards, or playing in the streets. It's not uncommon to see families walk, taking walks in the evening. It's not uncommon to see tons of people walking their dogs. If this AD unit goes through, it changes all of that. And once you go down this path, it's not reversible. At the last meeting, it was discussed that, and pointed out that rental permits should be issued, will be issued. Doug pointed out that rentals are only inspected once every three years, perhaps? That's a long time for a lot of things changing in those units without it being discovered and how people infringe on that. I know it's been discussed that the unit should be owner occupied. That's a little bit of a, of a benefit, I guess, but what's to say somebody just doesn't buy the unit, goes to Florida for the, for most of the year? As Doug pointed out, he didn't think that it could be regulated, how often the person had to live in that residence, and that person charges enough, and he, the, the resident lives in the ADU, the primary dwelling becomes the resident for the, for the renter, and they open it up to three, four, five people. And, and they charge enough money to cover their mortgage. All of a sudden, they've got a free bank, the mortgage is paying, is being paid for by the renters. There are so many different things that change. You increase off-street parking. We already have a parking problem on Oakley Drive, we have a speeding problem on Oakley Drive. I've spoken to officers several times about that, they patrol it. Unfortunately, when speeding occurs, it's a, it's a thoroughfare between Valley Vista and Douglas Drive. Your police force seems to change shifts when the majority of those issues happen, which is typically from six to eight in the morning and from four to six in the evening. We have those kinds of problems. We have people who are already parking on their grass. We have renters that are, that are, are renting single-family homes that have multiple, multiple vehicles, and they're parking on the grass. I thought there were laws against that. I, I've never seen anybody cited for that type of thing. We have people who dump grass clippings in the street. I thought there were codes against that. There's more than enough codes.
Excuse me, but your, your time is up right now?
Can I just make one last comment?
Go right ahead.
There are more than enough codes and regulations to be governed in Patton Township without having to increase that by allowing ADUs and duplexes to be developed in single-family neighborhoods.
Thank you for your comment. Any supervisor would like to comment at this time? I would like to, Supervisor.
I remember that discussion before, and I thought most of us were against it, but maybe I don't remember that right.
Well, this is one of the recommendations that came out of the Housing Task Force, and was referred to the planning commission.
They're not elected by anyone.
No, they were appointed by the board.
Right.
Okay, I would like to make a statement on that, where you mentioned that residents were not notified. On the task force, out of 18, nine were residents from Patton Township. Nine. I don't, I can't even tell you how many organizations can get that many residents that are concerned about where they live and be a part of the decision-making.
How many were from Pat- how many were from the?
How many were from Pat- Patton Township? The nine, all nine.
Not Patton Township, Park Forest, Patton Township, the offices, a whole lot of other areas.
But we are a community that looks out for all of us. I, I live in Pat-.
On mortgage.
I, I, I know. But what I'm saying to you, sir, for the first time in a long time, I sat as a resident when that came up, and I heard all the residents and their concerns. That's why they put the task force together. They put the, they put the task force together so they could hear all of our community, not just one, but all of our community. And hopefully, hopefully, working together, not just one person, not one person's suggestion, working together, we can resolve this.
I can fill this room if people are against it, if you like me to.
Be my guest.
I'm not just one person.
No. I'm not saying, because I was in the room when this room was filled with individuals that were disagreeing against this. But I also was in the room when people were for it. So, we have to come to a mutual agreement to work together on this. We are in a crisis. With COVID, people do not have their jobs the way they used to, they don't have the funding, so we're looking for affordable housing for everyone. Because you might not be able to afford a house back then that you're looking at right now. COVID has taken jobs, individuals, livelihoods, and we're looking to make sure everyone can afford to live in a household, in a community like Park Forest.
So, it's okay to change the whole dynamics of the community that had been in place 40, 50 years to perhaps solve a problem for people who aren't even a resident, who haven't paid their dues to, to buy their homes? So, is this another handout?
I wouldn't call it a handout, sir, because right now, we are all on the same boat. As far as COVID has, has, has put us all on the same boat.
I respect and disagree with that. Your, your thinking and, and the people that I've talked to who are residents of Park Forest that's in targets are too, are not on the same page as you.
I'm just one person, and I also live in Park Forest. I'm one person, but I can tell you that my neighbors, we are all working hard to keep our homes, to have a wonderful community, and to say, "We don't want it here," or, "I've worked hard all my life." I'm not saying no. I've known people, and I'm in that boat. I'm a veteran. I've worked hard. My family has worked hard. To be here, and.
You have a different opinion on, on this particular issue?
And that's fine. That, that's what makes this, that's what makes Patton Township a great place, because we can agree to disagree. But in the long run, we work together.
Then again, I would suggest that a letter be sent to the impacted areas, put a survey out, and let, let the majority prepare. I think my majority is greater than yours.
I'm not saying we've done it.
I'm just suggesting what was done last time.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So, I, this is a robust discussion. I'd suggest that we either decide to make it an item on the agenda later on today, or that perhaps add it to another agenda so that we can.
Okay.
Have a, a, continue to have a robust discussion with people represented.
I agree, I mean, I'll debate this all night long if you want.
No, thank you, sir. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And we look forward to moving forward on this.
I'm sure you're seeing here.
I'm looking forward to it. Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion Community Diversity Conference.
We're top, page three, and chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, jumped. CADA Local Shares and Funding Formula. Doug, you want to give us an update?
Sure, we've been talking with CADA since last fall about various issues. Last fall, started off with the A Route that CADA had dropped due to a lack of drivers. We've had some correspondence back and forth, and CADA was here last month to discuss with us. Ms. Luana Oliva, who is the executive director of CADA, is here tonight to talk about not only a replacement for the A, the A Route, but other issues having to do with local shares and funding formula and other service changes. So with that, with your permission, I'll turn.
Welcome, Luana.
Ms. Oliva.
If it's okay, I'll start out with the service, and then we can then transition, and we can take any questions in between on, on both. So, I have a few slides here, so that, just to illustrate, and then I also have passed out some paper copies of this. So, what I wanted to talk a little bit about is the service that we are planning to introduce in the fall. Now, the caveat I will say about this is, in order to do this in the fall, we have to get to 114 bus operators hired by CADA by May 1st. And that is the last time we can get somebody into a training class so that they'll have their CDL and be ready to drive once fall service starts in August. We're feeling pretty optimistic as of today, the report I got was that we're at 111. So, we're, we're feeling pretty good that this is actually going to happen. If something would happen that we can't start in the fall, what we would do is continue to recruit so that we could try and start in January. So, that we, I've, I've got a couple of different things here on this map, and what I thought I would do is start out talking about our CADA GO pilot, and then show how they, how that interacts with two, with two new routes. We have a new style of route that we're introducing. So, the first is the Northwest CADA GO zone that we will be doing a pilot on, again, we plan to do this in the fall. You know, each, each one of our CADA GO zones, they're all still pilots, they all are slightly different. Either it is, it's a populous area that's far out from our service, or you have an area where maybe it's low population, but it's closer to the service. And in this particular zone, we will be learning what happens when you put a CADA GO zone close to frequent service, but what I will say is that most of the areas within that zone, there's a lot of cul-de-sacs, and there's barriers for a pedestrian to be able to get out to the, the frequent service. So, that's one of the things that we've been looking at and working on as far as putting a CADA GO zone together. So, the way the CADA GO zone works will be that residents living within the zone can travel anywhere within the zone, or they can travel to destinations or connection points outside of the zone. So, right now, the, the destinations and connection points for the Northwest CADA GO zone are Wedmans, Walmart, The Giant at Northland Center, Weiss on Martin, Mount Nittany Medical Center, and Center of Medical Sciences Building. You can connect with the Southwest GO Zone, and also, they're going to connect with a couple of our routes that I'm going to tell you about here just in a moment. So, these zones will operate Monday through Friday from 6:00 AM till 10:00 AM, and then they'll run again from 3:00 PM until 7:00 PM. I'm gonna, I'll touch on some of the service that's going away once I talk about the next, the next part of it. The zones also going to be, then will connect with the connector routes that I want to talk to you about now. So, on the, on the map as well, you'll see a purple and a green line, and these are not our only routes, it's just I took, I sort of took everything else away so that you could just see those. So, these are what we are calling our connector routes, and the idea behind these routes is they're aimed at moving residents along and between retail, business, and medical locations. They connect with campus, but they do not travel across campus, so that helps us keep them moving. We're looking at a 24-minute frequency on these routes. The higher frequency makes it easier to connect from other routes and to connect with the, the GO Zones as well. So, the green zone here on the illustration is the Atherton Connector. This route runs from Colonnade here in Patton and connects to other connector routes, other routes in Downtown State College, and continues on to Rolling Ridge Stores and Medical Offices in the Scenery Park area of College Township. Again, the frequency on this route will be 24 minutes, so a bus will be coming through every 24 minutes, and that will run Monday through Saturday from 7:00 AM until 9:00 PM. So, the, the other line here, the purple line on the, on the map, is the College Avenue Connector. This route travels along the former K Route, Browning and Ferguson, and then it connects in Downtown State College, and then travels to the mall in the Walmart area. Again, this route will operate every 24 minutes, Monday through Saturday, between 7:00 AM and 8:00 PM, and then will continue to run from downtown to the mall from 8:00 PM to 11:00 PM on those days at about a 30-minute frequency. So, we're pulling back a little bit after 8 o'clock because of the one side of that connector route doesn't generate as much trips as the mall side, of course, does. So, with these, all of these services together that we're looking at introducing, we will be eliminating the A, the F, the G, the K, the M, the S, the P, and the XP. So, between the different, either between the CADA GO zones or between these routes, we're, we're replacing services in all of those areas. Okay, oops, okay, sorry, this was supposed to be, oh, it's, can you put it on slide, like slideshow? That's why it's like, I have about five different municipalities in this. Okay, great, now we could go to the next one. There we go. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. So the other thing that we are looking to do in the fall is to bring some of the express routes back in the midday. So our express routes are aimed predominantly at the student corridors, where we basically were running sometimes, you know, three, four buses, just trying to pick up all the people on the curb. During the early days of COVID, when the university closed down, we stopped running them completely, because they really are capacity. They're about crowds, about moving crowds, trying to get them to campus as quickly as possible. So last fall, we did bring the express routes back, but only during the peak hours, in the morning and the afternoon. And what we have been finding in the last probably five months or so, more so, it just keeps, the ridership is coming back, it's growing. And what we're finding is, is that without the express routes, we're overcrowding the regular routes that run through those corridors, much of which touch Patton. And we're either, we're putting out what we call a tripper or a float bus, trying to keep up with the crowds. So our plan is to put those express routes back in during midday. So from 7:30 a.m. until 11:00 a.m., the express routes will run every twenty minutes. Then between 11:00 and 3:00, we'll drop back to forty-minute frequency. And then back from 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., we'll go back up to the twenty-minute frequency on those express routes. Okay, and the final slide here I wanted to talk about is bringing back our late-night and Sunday service, not to the levels that we were pre-COVID, but like just trying to get back into offering some level of services at those times. In the case of the late-night service, we heard from passengers who were, other than your eight-to-five shifts, the folks that worked second and third shifts, and particularly those who are working in downtown State College restaurants, about the need for their transportation to come back, and how they were actually getting home often from their jobs. So the late-night service will be running, so we'll just be running these three routes that you see here on the map, which is MB, the College Avenue Connector, and I forget what the other one is, and it's not marked. Sorry, RP. Thank you. So anyway, we'll be running those Sunday through Wednesday. They will run until 12:30 a.m., and then from Thursday to Saturday, they will run until 2:30 a.m. The other service that has been eliminated during COVID is our Sunday service, which we definitely heard from people as well, as far as, you know, getting out to the grocery stores, socializing, those kind of things. And so again, we're going to use the same style with these three routes. On Sundays, we will be running from 8:00 a.m. until 12:30 a.m. on Sunday. Both the late-night service and the Sunday service will be operating on a thirty-to-thirty-five minute frequency. So we're actually picking up the frequency of the routes, but we just don't have quite as many routes running on Sunday as we did previously. We're sort of dipping our toe in the water to try and move back to offering some of these services. So those are the service changes that we're going to make. If you could hit the next slide, I just wanted to. So what I did want to do is, there has been some confusion when I'm showing the connectors, I did at least want to put a slide up there that shows all of the service that would be operating in the fall. And then, I just had one more slide, just, so we're in the public comment period right now. So I wanted to make sure that folks who might be watching at home would know how to comment on the service. They can call CADA, they can email us at comments@catabus.com through the website. It's interactive, where you can actually pull up maps, and you can actually comment based on places along the map, if someone would like to do that. And then tomorrow evening, we are doing a public hearing open house. It will start at 4:30 and go through 6:30 at the library in downtown State College. The concept here is, instead of having the podium and a mic, and everybody waits their turn and gets up to the mic, we're going to do it in stations where people can, one station will be just if you just want to hear a presentation about the different options, and then we'll have some other places where people can either ask questions about how the changes will impact their trip, or they can give us comments about how they feel about some of the changes. So we wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of that.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any supervisors that might have questions at this time? Supervisor Whitman?
Yes, I just wanted a clarification. I'm looking at the handout you gave us, and reflects many of the slides up there. The first handout, of course, shows the CADA Transit Zones and Avenue Connectors. And then the last map, the proposed Fall 2022 system, meeting system. Are you saying that we're not going to be having the many?
No, the last map is to show you everything that's out there, because there has been some confusion. We've been really focusing in and telling people about the connector routes, and then we've had some folks say, "Oh, you're canceling my route then," and so I'm showing that all those other routes are still there.
So even though it says proposed for Fall 2022, they're available now?
Yes, yes. Just not the connector and the two new zones.
So you're just wanting to simple?
Yes, yeah, so that you could actually see those.
Okay, at this time, I would like to hear from our Mark Parfitt from Patton Township, CADA Board rep. Mark, if you want to come on?
Let me go back to Luana if you want to talk about a couple other things.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
I'm happy to report that I think we have arrived at a really good place, and I want to thank everybody who helped get us here. I know not everybody was happy with me at all times, but the CADA staff, the CADA management leadership, township staff, the Patent Board, the CADA Board, I think we found a really good solution. This is a real win for Patton Township. And a couple of points I want to stress, the CADA GO expansion, the microtransit, it achieves a couple of goals we wanted. One was it restores commuter access to Park Forest for people who work, you know, perhaps at the university, need to get there in the morning and evening, or other parts of town. But it also goes well beyond that. That CADA GO Zone, that's door-to-door transit on demand in Patton Township. So for example, resident at Park Forest wants to go to Wegmans to get groceries, door-to-door, their house to Wegmans, Wegmans back to their house. If you're a senior citizen who has the free pass, sixty-five plus, that's a free trip on CADA GO. So we should see some really positive results and feedback. There's some ways I'd like to enhance this, maybe down the road, I'd like to see that gap in the middle of the day go away, like to see the service maybe enhanced to other parts of the township, like Ambleside or the Buffalo Run area. But I don't think it's fair for us to ask that until we give this a try and see how it works. So what I need, what I need next, or am asking for next, is your support to help, help us promote this the best we can, we all can, CADA and the township. One of the ways we do that is, we need to also stress that public transit is not just a bus. So for those who are taking the microtransit, you know, to the university, that involves a transfer now, that's very common for anybody who lives in a big city. You know, they know their transit route, they transfer bus here, bus here, train there, they just got it down. That's new to this community. It's part of a growing pain, and it's part of our shift from a bus service to a mobility provider, where all of these types of formats are working together, you know, not separately and parallel. So I'm excited to see what happens, and I'll thank you for your support of CADA as we work to get here today.
Thank you. Luana, and a lot has to do with Luana, if most of you don't know, I attend a lot of the CADA Board meetings, and thank you, thank you so much for working with Mark and the board and making sure everyone is taken care of. Thank you.
There's a lot of work here that has gone on in the last couple of months, so I appreciate that. Thank you. I was also asked to talk a little bit about the letter that I sent to Doug with ideas for looking at local match. So Elliot's probably been around long enough to remember the various different versions of local match formulas that we've had, and we continue to sort of evolve. And part of what we're evolving with right now is things like new types of mobility, like the CADA GO services. So one of the things that we've been dealing with and trying to work through is, first of all, in the past, we used to work through the COG process on the local match. And the original idea behind that, from what I've been told, is that it was a way to save extra meetings for the elected officials. But at a time, I can't remember exactly when the legislation went through, when Act 44 went through, local match went to a legislated amount that comes from the state. And now the state expects us to get a resolution from each of the communities that the transit serves. So we were going through the COG process, but then it really isn't doing anything because we still needed to go out and meet with you all in order to get resolutions. So that's one thing we're looking at. We have people in COG that aren't in CADA, and we have people that are in CADA services that aren't in COG. We're starting, you know, we're dealing with some of that. And with the formula itself, too, it's based completely right now on fixed route. So as we are changing the way that we're serving the community, we need to come up with something that brings all of that in so that we still have ways to bring everybody into the local match that is getting service, whatever the type of service that is that's serving that community. So I asked for the input of the municipal managers. They were very helpful in coming up with some ideas. And so what we're asking is that a committee be formed with the municipal managers of all of the service areas, and also a representative from Penn State would be on there. And what we'd like to do is, we're getting to you very late because of some of all of these things that we're dealing with. Normally, we would have been here last fall to talk about local match. But with some of these things we're talking about, trying to work through those, we're just now getting to you right now. So what we'd like to do is have everyone just go up the legislated five percent for the year that's going to start July 1st. And then that would give this committee a few months to start meeting and try and figure out if there's a better way to do the local map shares. There's been a few things that have been talked about, whether or not it should be about service or something else, or how do we make it simpler to understand, and those kind of things. So we're hoping that Patton Township will join us on the committee, and also would be willing for me to bring back a resolution to do five percent for the fiscal year starting July 1st.
Thank you. Is there any supervisor that has any questions at this time? Supervisor Lewis?
In asking us to support the new idea, I haven't looked at this because I haven't, I live in a neighborhood that won't be served anyway, but if I did, I'd want to know how to get one of these microtransit buses. Is it on an app that you just?
Yeah, so, sorry, I should have mentioned that. So if we have a lot of questions, I brought the expert with me. So a person can schedule their trip. So the nice thing about the CADA GO is you can schedule your trip in real time. So, you know, you can get up that morning and decide to schedule a trip, you can just decide you're at the grocery store and you want a trip back. You can do it one of three ways. You can, there's an app. The app is actually the most, is probably the best way to go about it, because there's a lot of functions in the app, lets you know where your bus is, sort of lets you know when it's going to be arriving, it lets you know about any changes in the routing. There's also a website that can be used to schedule the trip, if that's what someone would prefer, and you can also call CADA, and we'll walk you through and help you schedule a trip as well.
That's what I thought this was, that CADA can't just put buses out there and think that people, it's going to serve everybody in exactly the same way when they need it. And this way, you've got the equipment and you have the people to provide at least some service all the time, and a way for people to get that service. And we haven't had that before.
And literally, for years and years, you know, it's, we had forty-foot buses, and so if you had service, you were getting service with a forty-foot bus. And forty-foot bus doesn't fit every neighborhood, so. The technology changing is what's allowed us to start moving in this direction, so.
Is any other supervisor, I'm sure would like to, supervisor?
Yeah, so I'm just curious about the logistics of the CADA GO system. Is there going to be, it's a van? I take it that's, we'll just be kind of driving around, and in those green or in those blue or canneries, and then?
We'll let Derek talk about it. Derek?
We can call.
Yeah, well, certainly, that's a good question. What you'll have is, we have--
Derek, can you let the board know?
Oh, I'm sorry, my mistake. My name's Derek Sherman, I'm the Assistant ADA and On Demand Operations Manager of CADA. I was part of the startup of CADA GO in Belfont and now Bolzberg, and now with the proposal you just saw. So the way it's set up is that you'll have two to three vans in the zone running. And as people book trips, those vans will respond logistically. So it's, you may have this part of the zone and this part of the zone, and you may have people book here, and people book here. Two vans may be, you know, separately pushed to those areas, or you may have the same van. It really depends on the logistics, where they're going, where they're being picked up at, timing, so multiple things that go into the algorithm, which is way beyond my comprehension. Software is making, the software is making those decisions, most certainly. Now, I'm not going to tell you it's perfect all the time. It's a software, it's built by humans. But the nice thing is, is that that's being monitored at all times, and when we see problems, that's automatically sent to Transload. So, you know, we keep track of that stuff happening.
Cool, thank you.
Excuse me, Supervisor Torino, I'm so sorry. Do you have a question, sir?
No, no, a comment on the proposed five percent increase in municipal share. I think that's a very reasonable solution to implement right now, because as Luana said, this committee needs to meet to discuss possible changes to the way the funding formula is calculated based on all these changes. So I'm just saying, I'm in support of the five percent increase in Patton Township's share to CADA.
Doug, can we, should we wait, or can we?
I think Luana just needs a general sense from the board, whether that's agreeable or not, and then we'll have to take official action at a future meeting.
And I can get you the official Penn Dot resolution as well.
Yeah, so I mean, if somebody wants to object to a five percent increase, now would be the time to ask questions or raise that objection. I think also in terms of the committee that Luana talked about, the managers, if there's any objections to that, now would be the time to ask a question, and then, I don't think there's any objections to the service changes, but if there would be, again, Luana would like feedback on that.
Well, I would open it up to the public. Is there anyone here with public input on CADA? Okay, seeing none. Luana, thank you so much, and please thank your board and the CADA staff, and Mark as our representative, thank you so much. All right, moving next on the agenda. Diversity Equity and Inclusion, the Community Diversity Conference, June 21st, 2022. Supervisor Whitman, would you give us some information or update on that?
Sure. So the conference itself is in the planning stage. They do have many of the speaking slots filled, they're working on others. The conference will be an all-day event from 9:00 a.m. until 3:30. It'll be held at the Penn State or Inn, and obviously in person. There are four sessions, it's much like any conference, you can choose between five workshops or speakers at any one of the sessions. I wanted to give a little bit of overview of the Community Diversity Group and share this really lovely T-shirt that has been around for several years. The Community University Group itself has been around since 2001, and it has focused on ways to make this a more inclusive community, finding ways for people-- finding ways for people to work together. It offers training, it offers consulting. It has several subgroups, the Women empowerment seminars and luncheons. And then it has cultural corners, which is sometimes a monthly or bimonthly group that meets, talking about different issues. There's a book group that's going on. Again, talking about diversity, equity, and inclusion issues. It is one of the most active and inviting groups that I've ever been involved with. And I've been involved with a lot of groups, so I can sing its praises. But again, the conference itself is an all-day workshop, all-day conference on Tuesday, June 21st. And the four overarching, oh, great, thanks. More graphics up there. The four overarching areas of discussion are community governance, which would include civic engagement, community health and healing, dealing with racial trauma and health advocacy. The third is Community for All, which is basically building across the differences that we all bring to the table. And the fourth is interrupting structural oppression. And this involves areas of restorative justice, allyship, and community organizing. There was a pre, oh, the last full-day conference was in 2019, and over 200 people attended. So it's a hot ticket item. It will be going live, I think, May 1st. Be on the lookout, thank you.
And in addition, we have Chief Jolly would make a few comments. I know our township manager has attended, and I've asked Chief to make a few comments about his attendance there.
Yeah, certainly, thank you. Yeah, it's a fantastic conference. I've attended it a few times in the past. It's always, like Betsy just alluded to, it's very well-attended. The topics are very interesting and very engaging. And they have fantastic speakers there. So if anybody in the community is considering taking the day to go to this conference, I would encourage them to do so.
Thank you, Chief. All right, moving on. Next on the agenda is public safety. For A is March 2022 Police Report. Chief Jolly, if you'll give us an update?
All right, thank you. Yeah, so March was a very busy month for the police department. And happily, for training purposes, we had a lot of in-person training opportunities. So we'll get to that here just in a little bit. But as you can see, our officers were busy with 208 traffic stops, writing 65 traffic citations, 30 parking tickets. Some of those were some leftovers from one of our last storms that we had in March, 16 criminal arrests. And then our bike patrol was out and rode 17 miles, did 28 business checks, and three vacation home checks. Under department notes, a 52-year-old male was arrested for possession of marijuana. The male was pulled over for a traffic violation. The officer detected the odor of marijuana coming from the vehicle. And subsequently, the male turned over a small amount of marijuana to the officer. A 37-year-old male was arrested for theft of lost property. A customer deposited a large amount of money into an ATM at one of our local banks. They thought that the deposit went through, so they left the area. The male who was arrested was the next person to come up to the machine. And the money that the person before thought they deposited never actually made it into the machine. And that male unfortunately took the money and then made no attempts to return it back to the rightful owner, the customer, or to the bank. A 20-year-old male was arrested for aggravated assault. The male entered into a mutual fight with another man. And during the fight, the defendant pulled a knife out and stabbed the victim in the back twice. Seven arrests were made for retail theft, and one arrest was made for driving under the influence. Our officers successfully served nine of the 12 warrants that they attempted, and we conducted six vacation home checks. We did use force during two incidents in March. One of our officers was assisting Ferguson Township Police Department in serving a 302 warrant or a mental health warrant. When our officer arrived, the Ferguson officers actually had the male handcuffed. However, he was kicking and thrashing about. So our officer assisted by controlling that male's arms and legs until he was loaded onto a stretcher by EMS for transport to hospital for further services. And there were no injuries reported by the male or by the officer in that incident. In the second incident, our officers were dispatched to a felony criminal trespass. Our officers attempted to take the suspect into custody by handcuffing him behind his back. When the first handcuff was applied, the male began to resist by pulling away and pushing the officers. The officers controlled the male's arms and spoke to him calmly, and eventually, he was successfully detained. No injuries were reported by the male. However, one of our officers did suffer minor cuts to his finger. In community relations, our officers conducted foot patrols around some of the student housing complexes. Officer Sunderland installed three child safety seats for township residents. Officer Tuskovich spoke to the entire sixth-grade body at Park Forest Middle School about social media, safety, and usage. And our officers were active at the Nittany Valley Sports Center during some of the events over the weekends and basketball tournaments and other things that they hosted there. So going out there to kind of fly the colors and make sure everything was going smoothly out there. And then also, again, obviously, we're active in the school zones during drop-off and pickup hours. Like I said, we finally had the opportunity. With the decline in case numbers and some of the restrictions, we're seeing a lot more in-person training being offered. We've always been very proactive in trying to get training so our officers have the best education and most cutting-edge training that is available to them. So our officers attended tactical response training, team training. Officer Sunderland and Officer Tuskovich attended Communicating on the Spectrum, which was an autism awareness training for law enforcement. All of our officers completed their night or low-light qualification with handguns and patrol rifles, which is required by MOPAC. Detective Snyder and Officer Tuskovich attended training on social media and open-source investigations. Sergeant Alwright attended the Pennsylvania Law Enforcement Accreditation Training Conference. Detective Federinko and Officer Salad attended hostage negotiator training. And Officer Salad and Officer Garzal began their final two-week class to become certified accident reconstructionists. We actually hosted that training. It began on March 28th and concluded on April 8th. I'm very happy to say that both officers passed with flying colors. So we now have two certified accident reconstructionists replacing Officer Shoemaker, who retired about a year and a half ago, and Officer Swindell, who retired just last March here. We also are working, though, right now. Officer Garzal has put a lot of work into developing a county-wide accident reconstruction team. So we're going to kind of pool our assets throughout the county here so that we have a team that can respond to serious or fatal crashes throughout the region. So I'm really happy with progress on that and kind of Patent Township leading the charge on that effort. Detective Federinko and Officer Fanochio attended the Pennsylvania Narcotics Officers Association Conference as well. I attended a meeting, along with other police chiefs in the center region, with representatives from Students Demand Action at State College Area High School, discussing safe storage of firearms. I attended the Children's Advocacy Center Advisory Committee meeting, the PALRAS Conference, and a Penn State Football 2021 Season Debrief, talking about things that maybe we could do better. The Center County Chiefs Meeting, and also the Community and Campus Immunity. Lastly, I have for you, again, our record list of calls. Our calls went down just by four from February. We had 386 in March. The traffic was the most frequent call for service to traffic category with 61, followed closely by Health and Safety EMS Assist, where we had 60. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chief. All right, next on the agenda is the noise waiver request for 614 Devonshire Drive. Doug?
My video turned on. Good evening. Yeah, we received a request early this week from the owner at 614 Devonshire Drive. They want to hold a client appreciation event on Thursday, June 2nd. They had talked to Chief Jolly previously. Were concerned about their neighbors. And he was advised to, the resident was advised to fill out the waiver application and bring it to this point. So we have Mr. Raider, who's the owner, I think, with us here.
Hello, everyone, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, Brian.
So I'm on the planning commission, so I'm familiar with a noise ordinance in multiple capacities. And when you read the fine print in the noise ordinance, specifically Section 105.5, it reads that there should be no audible noise beyond your property boundary. Makes sense. So my intent is to have a client appreciation event. That's going to be, the game plan is to have it on a Thursday night. I have someone playing the guitar, very cut background music. And that's going to be from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. And so I just thought I will, and I'm expecting, I don't really know, maybe 50, maybe 60 people. It will be indoors and outdoors. It'll be indoors if it's raining. But, so that's my plan. And I thought I would just follow the suggestion, which is if you can't, you know, knowing that you can't technically, according to the ordinance, hear audible noise, music, beyond your property boundary, I'm not going to be able to do that. So that is the reason why I'm requesting the verit. That's it.
Okay. Supervisor, any supervisors? Questions? Dan, that's him. Hi, Dan, sorry about that. Supervisor Torino.
A couple of questions, Brian. Your intent is to have a speaker, right? It's just going to be amplified music?
So my intent is to have background music, not a concert. So it's like a social event where you would hire a pianist or someone just to play music in the background. They're not performing, they are background music.
Yeah, but the.
And they will be amplified. They do have a speaker, that's correct. I got it.
This will be on your deck?
That's correct. That's correct.
Oh, okay. I mean, personally, I don't have any objection to what you're requesting, but I think the process the board has followed in earlier noise waivers. We've polled the neighbors. More recently, it was the RE Farm Cafe who asked for permission to hold, you know, outside events at their restaurant this coming summer and fall, weddings and parties and other kinds of things where they would have amplified music. And I know that the township sent notices to nearby residents. Because of the satellite map that was included in our agenda material, it looks like you have backyard neighbors very close to your house, those that are on Cherry Ridge Road, you know, as well as your next-door neighbors on the same street.
Correct.
I'm just suggesting to the board, I don't think we have to vote on this waiver request tonight. I think we have an opportunity here to send notification to immediate neighbors of this address and just see. Invite them, if anyone has any issues with the noise waiver requests, that they should submit their comments to the board. And we can consider it in two weeks at our next meeting.
Ericson?
Supervisor Abel?
I agree with that. We heard at the beginning of the meeting a public comment about notification. And I've never heard anyone in the township complain that they were notified of too many things.
Great, any Supervisor Whitman?
So Brian, I would also like to suggest, and something tells me that you are somebody who's probably already thought about this, that you reach out to your neighbors before the postcards get out there. You know, I'm sure you know many of them, certainly the ones across the street, and just let them know that's going on. Have you?
Correct.
Thought about that? There's a similar party, not a, actually, there's a party. It's not amplified, but there are a lot of people that, once a year, across the street where I live. And they come door-to-door once a year and say, hey, we're having our get-together in August, and just want to give you a, they actually probably don't apply for a noise ordinance, I should say, just they do.
That was my intent, but according to the ordinance, we are to request the waiver.
Absolutely, yeah. But, you know, it goes a long way for just neighborhood spirit to reach out.
Correct, I agree wholeheartedly.
And I know you will.
Any other supervisor with questions? Is there anyone in the public here on this issue? All right. Then I would like to suggest that we put this off at our next board meeting, to give you ample enough time, Brian, to reach out.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right.
And Madam Chair, just to reiterate, I think Doug Erickson ought to send out notices to the immediate neighbors, as we have done in the past.
Thank you, Supervisor Torino. I would like to take a short break here. And we'll come right back in about five minutes. Thank you. All the order, back to order here. Next on the agenda is the response to public comments on the snow plowing. Ken Soder, the Department of, Director of Public Works. Good speak.
You're in muted, Ken.
There we go.
Thank you.
Sure. I just put together a brief response to some of the questions the gentleman had proposed to us. As Doug had mentioned, we'll probably put something like this out in the fall as well just to make the public aware of it. We really haven't changed how we remove snow from the streets for quite some time. So we've just been continuing on as we see the most effective way to clear the streets.
Might I go through some of the details just on the mailbox and then on street policy?
Yeah, we've had a policy with replacing mailboxes that are damaged. We first attempt to repair the existing mailbox if that's possible. If not, we will, you know, if the property owner chooses, we'll install a standard black mailbox with a new post and put up the four numbers on it for them at no charge. If they choose to have a, we'll say a custom mailbox installed, or if they would like to have a custom mailbox and they purchase it, we can install it for them and we would reimburse them, it's $36, I believe, or somewhere around $36, if they purchase the mailbox and we install it. If they purchase the mailbox and install it themselves, we'll reimburse them the $51.50. So, and this has been, you know, well received by the township residents. They're very grateful that we do this, you know, and the postal service is grateful as well because we're one of the, you know, folks that actually do this for residents and we're kind of an outlier with that whenever we talk to the postal service.
Might I just go through the snow plowing practice real quick then? Thanks, Ken.
Sure. What we do is we concentrate on the main roads first. The main roads, school routes and cap routes, we go through and make sure that we have those passable. And as the storm starts to wind down, we'll go further out and we start to clear all the streets back to the curb line. That's why a lot of times people will see us and some roads are clear or, you know, they've been cleared or they've had trucks go through multiple times whenever other routes might not have had a truck as many times. But as the storm winds down, we start pushing snow to the curb line of all the streets. And that's why I stated that snow doesn't have to be removed from sidewalks for 24 hours after the snowstorm stops. So if the snow has not been pushed back to the curb in front of your home, there is a possibility that there could be snow deposited on your sidewalk if you clear it prior to the snow being back to the curb line.
Thanks, Ken.
Thank you. Supervisor Whitman?
Yeah. So first, Ken, I thought it was a great letter, really, I learned a lot from it and it was just such a great, a great tone, which counts for a lot. So thanks, really. And I was going to suggest that we have this added to the website, have a couple of bullet points people can click on and learn about the snow plowing practices, policies for snow removal, and mailbox policy. To save, maybe save some frustration in the future. Really, really nice.
Any other supervisors? Supervisor Trevino, or...
Well, I agree with Betsy. I appreciate having all this information in writing and available for the public where, you know, whenever Doug or Ken gets a question from the public, they can be referred to the written policies on the website. I don't think, Ken, that you're ever going to avoid resident frustration. Just the nature of snow plowing, there's no way that the snowplow driver can avoid putting snow in front of anyone's driveway. And especially if they come through multiple times, or each pass is going to deposit more snow in front of someone's driveway. And it's not the township's responsibility to go to every homeowner's driveway to clear their driveway entrance. That's unfortunately, that's always going to fall on the backs and arms of the, of the homeowner to clear that driveway. So I think it's important that homeowners realize they can, they'll have to wait until the 20, 24 hours or after the snow stops and the last snowplow has come through before they ought to exert all that energy and clear their driveway. But of course, some, some people have to get in and out, even during a snowstorm. And my, my next door neighbor is the director of the emergency room in Denny Hospital. He has to get in and out, you know, at all hours of day and night. Unfortunately, it's up to him and his family. They've got to clear their, the snow from the driveway. So anyway, thanks for everything Public Works does, and I've always been impressed with how quickly the township's snowplow trucks come through, my neighborhood anyway, it's the only neighborhood I observe. So during a snow event and, and after a snow event, we're always pleased at how well our, the roads in my particular neighborhood are, are clean.
Thank you. Supervisor Abel?
No, I, I agree with all that and on our particular cul-de-sac, we're often a little later in the process of having it cleaned up and I'm actually pleased about that because nobody can say we have favoritism.
Okay. Supervisor Woodruff, would you?
Nothing right now.
All right. I'm going to open it up to public comment. And sir? Please step to the podium.
Richard Mayer, 1869 Park Forest Avenue, proud resident for 35 years now. Once again, my comments are G-rated, suitable for kids of all ages.
And before you get started, sir, before, the last time we went through, I know you said G-rated, please keep it that way. I really appreciate the warning.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
They're G-rated tonight.
All right.
First of all, my thanks to Mr. Erickson and Mr. Soder for their quick response and the publication of the township's policy regarding the clearing of our streets of snow and the repairing and replacing of any damaged mailboxes. It's all good information and it addresses the township's accountability in fixing things when things get damaged. And as Mr. Trevino just commented, that I don't think driveways are an issue in this matter. Driveways are driveways, they're right against the street, and yes, they get plowed, they get blocked, but that is what it is, you know? I think, I think most people are willing to, to deal with that. But what's troubling and what's missing in the township's response, in my opinion, is who is accountable when that snow is thrown onto the sidewalk? And that's all, that was my main concern of two weeks ago and why I reappear tonight. Let's first note, Mr. Soder included the following in his written response. "The angle of the snowplow and the speed of the truck will affect the distance the snow is cast." That's important. Also note, on today's agenda, it states, "No board action is required." It also says that, you know, it will be taken, presented again, I guess, in November and December, which is, which is good. Well, let's consider two things tonight. What hasn't been addressed so far to my satisfaction is whether the drivers are really aware of the differences of the buffer size on the various streets in the village. As I said two weeks ago, I didn't know that my street, Park Forest Avenue, has a 13-foot buffer and Laurel Lane, right around the corner, has only a five-foot buffer until I went out and measured it. Now 13 feet, that's two of me. Five feet is here. That's significant when snow has to travel from street to sidewalk. Us on Park Forest, we don't get impacted by this maybe once every 15 years, 20 years. That 13-foot buffer is a blessing. Laurel Lane, that's another case. So maybe where a speed of 25 miles per hour for the snowplow might work on one street, that same speed won't work on another. So the simple solution might be for the plow drivers to slow down just a bit. There we have a simple solution where none of the parties involved will be terribly inconvenienced. And the second issue to consider yet tonight is this issue of accountability. The township acknowledges it has and assumes responsibility, or it acknowledges and assumes responsibility to repair and replace damaged property like mailboxes. That's great. That's accountability. What is not answered so far is who is responsible when street snow is deposited or thrown onto an owner's sidewalk? Who is responsible? Who is accountable? I believe most homeowners are willing and will deal with snow that comes down from this angle. But I also believe that most homeowners have a problem with snow that comes in from this angle, especially when assisted by a snowplow. To that end, I suggest in addition to the current township policy, and something for the Board of Supervisors to seriously consider in the next couple of months. When a township plow driver throws snow onto my sidewalk, onto your sidewalk, or onto any sidewalk, let's have the driver return within 24 hours and clear that snow. That's accountability. And it meshes neatly to the current policy concerning owners' mailboxes when they get impacted. Because it's all about doing the right and decent thing by the residents who make Patton Township what it is today. You're going to do it for the properties, then do it 100%. But the best part of my plan, of my suggestion, is that this doesn't impact, impede the driver or the borough to conduct how he or she wants to plow the street note, the street snow. They can drive as fast or slow or in any manner that they want when it, when it comes time to plow the street snow. The only, the only catch on this is that the driver will be accountable for any sidewalk that gets affected by their action.
Thank you so much for your comment. Your time is up and we have taken down notes.
Okay.
And your suggestions, sir?
I would, I would like, some, this was suggested to me and I would like to present this in summary.
Could you just make sure that our township manager gets that so we can move on?
We're talking 30 seconds.
Right now? I have a large agenda, sir, and if you would be so kind as just make sure our township manager has that, I appreciate that.
I will do that. I appreciate the board's and borough's time and effort on this matter.
All right. And Supervisor Abel?
Do I have time to talk about this briefly?
Sure.
That might be a good idea, although if you're the plow operator, remembering which places this happened 24 hours later might be tough. But there could be a training issue where if we know that this problem occurs multiple times, that, what? When you're done, I'd just, a couple of comments I'd like to make. All right. No, that, when, if we know that it's a problem in certain part, along certain parts of the street, if the drivers are aware of it and are asked to, to mind the fact that it's more likely that there'd be a problem, I think that might be the best way to go after it. Because, because if people want to do a good job.
Supervisor McGruder?
So obviously we'll take this into consideration, finish with diligence and come back and, you know, echoing these concerns and actually coming with recommendations. Because again, I think it's important for us to know whether there are differences to try... to try to find some type of middle ground, right? I think our, our Public Works workers, they do a really good job. And I know you talked about sort of that, that clearance. And I know for me, in my neighborhood, there was actually no clearance between the, the sidewalk and the street. And so it makes sense then why, you know, that there's snow being piled on those sidewalks. And I'm aware that I actually pushed snow out into the street to try to, you know, get it away from my place. And so I know you talked about residents being responsible for this and then down, but I think, you know, that gets complicated in, in certain areas. And, you know, coming back, the Public Works, they work for, for us, right? And obviously, they work for the residents and they are residents themselves. And I think putting individual responsibility on those members can, can just be problematic. And I mean, if we want to raise taxes to pay this, this person to come back and work extra time, then I think obviously that's something we could talk about. And there's, there's always a give and take and, and not so easy. But yeah, again, I, I think it's important to be having these conversations. And again, thank you for having these. And I think Doug has something to mention.
Yeah. Doug?
I just wanted to note, I mean, there are, as, as Suton McGruder pointed out, there are places in the township where sidewalk is right next to the, to the road. So obviously, there are places where there's six inches of separation, there's places where there's a foot of separation, and there's, it varies everywhere from probably zero to thirteen feet. So I would be very leery about setting any sort of precedent that say we can never put snow on a sidewalk at this location. Because it's not only the speed of the truck and the angle of the plow, but it's the weight of the snow, it's how much snow's sitting there on the street, how long till it came, the last time it came back, which way is the wind blowing, and all those other issues are all variables that go into it. As we've noted, the public works crew worked hard to get things open. They know that it's very important that we keep the town running as well as we can when we have these snow events. So, you know, they're, they're working out there to get all the roads open because that's where people, people typically need to get in their car and go from their car to their jobs when they have essential duties, as Dan noted with his neighbors. So roads are first and then sidewalks are priority after that. So we are really cognizant of all the special requests that people would like us to fulfill for them about snow and plowing snow. There are places where there are only driveways on one side of the street and they think we should plow all the snow to the other side of the, of the street. There are other places where people have other special concerns. But what we do is we plow from the center of the road out to the edges. Doesn't matter how many driveways or sidewalks are on that side of the street or this side of the street. And we, to keep everything standardized, that's what we do. We don't, you know, there's places where there's grass median and people think we ought to plow everything from the middle. Problem with that, as soon as it starts to melt, the water all runs back across the road and freezes at night, which is a really bad thing. So places where we have grass medians, we plow from the center of the road back out to the edge. If we want to have a discussion on setting, changing that policy, I think we need to set aside several meetings, quite frankly, and probably have a long and hard discussion about where that limit should be if you want to set a limit or something. So that's my say.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you, sir. I have a gentleman on the line who has been waiting, Mr. Jim Payne. Your hand has been up, sir, so long. I apologize. You have the floor.
That's fine. I'm patient. Couple, couple of comments. Many of my experiences that I have done through my lifetime, I drove a snowplow for a couple of winters. You can adjust the blade so it doesn't throw it way off to the side. It might not get it back as far as you want from the curve, but I'm the same as Mr. Mar where I have about a thirteen foot. Another point on the twenty-four hours of clearing sidewalks since the storm ended, you say wait until it's, it's, the street has been plowed back to the curb. Too many times, late fall, early winter, late winter, early spring, and sometimes during January thaw, when you get sleet and freezing rain, soon as the storm stops, the temperature drops and it starts to freeze. So there's times where you have a icy mess that can't be cleaned up very fast. One neighbor told me, get somebody else to clear it. That costs money. So please take into account when you're twenty-four hours after a storm stops. And way back when, I asked Chief Jolly, who decides when the storm stopped? Because I was cited one time when it was snowing at one o'clock in the morning and I was out the next day, and I wind up with a citation on my door. So you have to take into account a lot of factors. I do appreciate the job that they do, but they could do it a little bit better at times. And if nothing else, tell them they have to obey the speed limit of twenty-five miles an hour, just like all the other people are supposed to. They come down Sierra Lane faster than twenty-five miles an hour. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Payne, and thank you so much.
One additional follow-up to Mr. McGruder's, talking about the township dollars. Looks like they heard it.
Go ahead, Doug.
It's been a head scratcher for years. And like I say, I've been around for thirty-five years and seen mailboxes knocked down. And, and I think in my last presentation, I had photos of what occurred on Laurel Lane back in twenty twenty, that December day. And it only takes ten minutes to knock down a couple of those mailboxes. But when the township is called and they come out and they do a great job, you know, it's, it's appreciated. But there's two or three guys that show up in a dump truck or pickup truck, you know, and it takes forty-five minutes to an hour for them to clear, clear the snow because we're still talking about snow that have been thrown there and clear away the broken mailbox and post and put the new one in. Two or three guys. Seen this for years. So action in like what would take, you know, a split second to, to remediate, you know, the, the follow-up takes three man-hours. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I make one?
Supervisor Whitman?
Suggestion that we maybe think about putting this on in September agenda and have a discussion on that and...
Again, I'm serious. If we want to talk about changing policies and putting limits on what they're going to do, we need to start probably in July.
Then, then do. Let me just say that precipitation has increased, you know, because of climate change, it's going to increase more. So this problem's not going away. So, yeah, I don't mind.
Okay. Supervisor Abrams?
Maybe the, when we discuss it in September, we should decide if we want to have that longer discussion or, or not. Because obviously, we can't solve any, the whole thing at that point. But I think bringing it up and seeing what we want to, if, what, if anything we want to do about it is a good idea.
Okay. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the Work Zone Awareness Week, April eleventh through the fifteenth. Ken?
Yep.
I think that's, you?
Yeah. National Work Zone Awareness Week, it's, it's a national initiative. Each year, they have a different state that comes up with a theme for it and so forth. This year, it's Virginia. It kind of correlates with the start of roadwork and so forth that we see throughout the entire, you know, Commonwealth and, and, you know, the different seasons we have, and everybody calls it construction season when you're trying to get down on Pennsylvania's roadways. It really is just to bring awareness to, you know, we need to slow down in work zones, respect the people that are there because they potentially could be your neighbors or somebody else. There was a, you know, a little bit of a decrease in twenty twenty with the total crashes and so forth, but that might have been due to, you know, the pandemic and less people traveling and so on. So it's really, it's just an initiative to bring attention to it. Each day during this week, there's a different initiative or webinar and so forth. Today is Wear Orange to support the National Work Zone Awareness Week. So it's really just to bring everybody's attention to it, to try to keep everybody safe.
Okay. Questions? Supervisor Abrams?
I think the township does a great job with marking the work zones in our, in the township. There's always, there's always a flag there that says work, work ahead and, and there's, there are flag people if necessary. I think that's very important. You go to some of our neighbors and you come upon them just like that. And it's, it's the inconsistency, I think, that can be a killer.
Moving right along, we have the Acceptance Drainage Easement for our Graymont A. Ken, I think you're doing the update on that?
Yep. Well, on Purdue Mountain Road, we're doing some upgrades to part of that road and part of the upgrades include repairing and working with the stormwater drainage. And down near Valley View, we do have an area that we have an issue with stormwater runoff. And we weren't able to transfer that water to what would be the receiving stream because we didn't have an easement to get across a piece of property that the pipe would need to go through. Graymont is, you know, kind enough to allow us, or grant us an easement to go across their property to get this water off of the roadway, off the edge of the road, to prevent it from causing other issues and get it to a body of water that can, you know, safely handle.
Is there any supervisor that has a question or comment? All right. Then can I get a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-two zero one two and accept the easement agreement for the township?
So moved.
Second? Second? Discussion?
Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extension? The Resolution twenty twenty-two zero one two and the easement agreement is adopted. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on, next on the agenda is engineering, planning and zoning. The Planning Commission report. Sharon Collins will be giving us an update. Thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
Well, we didn't have a, a regular meeting this month. We just had a work session this month and we were discussing the ADUs, the accessory dwelling units, which, which Barry was talking about at the very, very beginning of this meeting. And I just want to really clarify that right now, we're just, in the work sessions, we're just defining and discussing. We're not voting on anything. We're probably several meetings away from that. But what's been brought up so far and been discussed has been in the R-two zoning areas. And then there was some question as to whether it would also be affecting the R-one zoning areas. So the accessory, so this was something that was brought to us, I guess, by the, by the half house, Housing Task Force for affordable housing. And it's for people who want to put like, take, take their home and actually make a second unit in their home for, for renting out. And the limits that we have talked about so far is we would be limiting it to a thousand square feet at the maximum. It would be one per lot, but that's still up for discussion, but I think that's the way things were leaning after the end of our work session. It would have to be owner occupied. There was some discussion and some difference of opinion as whether it would have to be in the envelope of the house itself, or could it be within the envelope of an additional structure, say a, a garage up over the top of the garage? And then there was a lot of discussion about that because then you have to get into what are the variances of height and things like that. So, I mean, this is all discussion.
Right.
And then there were some people who were wanting to know if, if it could go into, like, further out into the yard as a separate structure. I don't think much, many of us were thinking that that was a good idea. Compliance, we talked about compliance of these units. And so they were international compliance rules that, that, that they were defining for us. And so those are things that we will be, if we decide to move in this direction at all before we presented to the community or presented for voting at the Planning Commission. I mean, we'll, we'll be deciding whether are those compliance regulations something we're comfortable with or do we want to narrow those? Because, you know, a lot of the areas are going to be smaller, sort of neighborhood or less units in fairly dense neighborhoods for a lot of people. And it was also brought up, we don't want to change the complexion or the, of the, of the neighborhoods themselves. And, and you do have people who have, you know, poured their life savings into their house and they want to have, be able to, you know, resell their home and make some money when they need to do that. And so, so the needs of some people shouldn't be overstepping the boundaries and the needs of other people. So these are things we're just talking about, just discussing, just defining. Let's see if there's anything else on there that, pretty much that's, that's all that we, you know, that's all that we were talking about.
Sharon, thank you so much.
Any questions?
Any questions from any supervisor? Okay.
Right here.
Oh, Supervisor Whitman?
Yeah. First, first of all, I want to thank the Planning Commission for all of the time and energy that you and others have put on this. It's very complex. I was one of the supervisors who a couple of years ago championed this project and voted to send it to the Planning Commission. So I, I think you, it's a difficult area to discuss among yourselves and in our community, but I think it's a very important thing. This is looking at the future and we're not just looking at this in town, town trucks where it's happening. Town, town, you have to be a leader in many areas, but what the Housing Task Force put together is being used as an model in other major counties. So, you know, this is that kind of a way for the future. And it's, it's not, we want to do it in a way that, that, that works on, on site and it's about having a discussion. So I applaud you and I don't want you to think that you are facing a sea of opposition. There is going to be opposition. There was opposition for, for me when I first sat and bore with Patton Cross. And we sat down, we had both sides at the table and we came up with a good workable solution.
Sharon? Thank you. Thank you. And thank the Planning Commission for all their hard work.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is the recommendation for the Township Traffic Engineering Consultant, Alexandra.
That would be me. Hello, everybody. We received nine proposals for our traffic engineering consulting services. Our selection committee was comprised of Elliot Abrams, Doug Erickson, myself, Susan Wheeler, and Bill Burnett on the Planning Commission. We all ranked the proposals and selected three firms to interview. We selected Drive- We selected Drive Engineering, Panone, and McCormick Taylor. So we interviewed those three firms and unanimously selected or recommending McCormick Taylor to be our traffic engineer. I also checked their references around the center region and everyone spoke very, very highly of their work and therefore that is our recommendation.
Okay. Any supervisor have any questions?
I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation of the task force who reviewed all the proposals and go with, check off the name McCormick.
McCormick Taylor.
McCormick Taylor.
Can I get a second?
Sir.
Second by McGruder. Discussion? Seeing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extension? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on. Next on the agenda is Special Consultant for Waddle Road Traffic Signal Coordination. Doug?
That's me, yeah. So we have a unique set of circumstances along Waddle Road. We have a, a traffic coordination software system that different from anything else that we have in the township, actually different from anything else in Pendon District Two. With the Waddle Road, with the Toftrees West development, we'll be putting the Toftrees Waddle Road signal on this, on this coordinated system. And in talking with our current engineer in Pendon District Two, nobody really has any real experience with this Centrac system. So I reached out to Jacobs Engineering, have worked with them in the past. They were part of the team that worked with us when this system went in back in 2017 and, and asked them if they had folks on staff who were very, very knowledgeable of this system, have worked on the permeating and the operational bin. They both, they have both of those capabilities. And they provided a, a proposal to me noting the folks that they would put on the issue. We talked with them a couple of weeks ago. They were well aware of the issues that we might be, well, that might, that we, that we're going to have to deal with, with this system. So I recommending that we bring them on as a special consultant just for this one project. It'd be a time and materials project and just to get it started, to go to an amount not to exceed 20,000. We may be way under that depending on, but I just, so we don't have to come back multiple times, put the 20,000 in there. So I'd ask the board to consider action to approve Jacobs Engineering for this project.
Okay. Do I have any supervisor that has questions for Doug at this time? If not, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Madam Chair.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I did have one question. Yeah. Doug, if this is a unique software system, why, why was it installed in the first place?
At the time, it was the state of the art. And our real expectation was that we would be using this system elsewhere in the township. We looked at installing it on Valley Vista and it was so expensive at that point that we could never really afford it again. Nobody else in the center region has used it. Pendon District Two is moving to a different system. So everything that's going to be on Atherton Street and what we have on Valley Vista now is on a different system. One of the decisions that we have, that Alex and I and Jacobs Engineering will make early on is, do we keep this Centrac system here or not? And it may be really that we don't even keep the Centrac system. There are some additional costs to it that are over and above these other systems. So we may have a couple of meetings with Jacobs and decide we're not going to move forward with the, with the Centracs. And so that may, you know, we may be a couple thousand dollars into this system and decide just we're going to, we're going to go back to the standard that everybody else is using. So, but these guys have the best experience, I think, in the state of Pennsylvania with people that have been using this, this system. So I wanted to bring them in so we could talk to them and get a real, real sense. And also if we do do it, they can get their partners in the other Pendon districts to talk to the traffic people in, in our district and maybe ease the permitting system if we do go ahead with it.
Supervisor Trevino, are you all right with?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. Any other supervisor? So all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions? The motion passes. All right. Thank you, Doug. Next on the agenda is the request for comments for Ferguson Township Official Map amended. Nicole or Doug?
That'll be me. Good evening, everyone. So per the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code, Ferguson Township is giving Patton Township the opportunity to review its recently amended official map. The board actually saw an iteration of this on March 3rd, so that material has been attached for you. So there is a minor update to this most recent amendment, and that is to update the mustard gap trail is being designated as a proposed bicycle facility. This change is in accordance with the 2017 Center Region Bike Plan. Staff is okay with this and the Planning Commission will review this update at their May 2nd meeting. So if the board has any comments they would like to make, we can make sure those get sent to Ferguson Township.
Okay. And there any comments from any supervisors at this time? Can I get Nicole's? Okay. Seeing none, Nicole, thank you.
One.
All right. Moving on, next on the agenda is Administration. Pennsylvania State Association for Township Supervisors, PSAT Annual Conference, Proposed Resolution and Changes to the Bylaws. Doug?
PSAT's conference is in a couple of weeks. There's three members of the board going there. Dan Trevino is our designated voting delegate. So one of the highlights of the conference is sitting through the resolution voting process on Tuesday morning. I just, you had as part of the agenda, the list of proposal of resolutions numbering from 1 to 50, I do normally, I look through those. I, the only two recommendations, the PSAT has a, has a Resolutions Committee that goes through and makes a recommendation, either support or oppose, on each of the resolutions. The only two that I would think the board may want to consider moving in a different direction than what the Resolution Committee are is Resolutions 22, 24, and 22-25 on page five. 24 has to do with Sustainable Pennsylvania Community Certification and moving municipalities towards reducing carbon emissions and greenhouse gases. My sense is the direction we've been heading in recently with Patton Township would say we would support that move, just as we have been moving in Resolution 2025. Has to do with discrimination in areas of employment, housing, and public accommodation based on sexual orientation, gender identity, and expression. Another topic we've been talking about, forming a, a local Human Relations Commission also. So I would suggest that the board reconsider the Resolutions Committee recommendation and provide direction to Mr. Trevino to vote in support of those two.
Okay. Any supervisor have any questions on that?
I'd agree with that.
I have several.
Supervisor Whitman?
I'm sorry, I jumped in front of LA.
Okay.
No, I was finished. I just said I agree with Doug, that's all. Sorry. And I wasn't, I wasn't called on, so I jumped ahead of you.
Okay. Supervisor Whitman?
Okay. I actually had a number of things that I proposed to, that I had a question about, and I'm sorry, I'd like to go through those. So I'm not sure, something's jumping up here, I'm not sure what I did. I made my comments on the, okay. So in, yeah, so the, there are 20, 22-13 and 20, sorry, has to do with using cinders on the road and 22-14, oh wait, I'm lost, sorry, I have no question. No, just 22-13, that, yeah, I did a little bit of reading on cinders and there are some, some toxic materials that are released with that. I don't have them here right now, but I would, and I think they were asking against EPA's recommendation. So, oh yeah, sorry, I'm just losing my place here because something's popping up. So Doug, do you have any comments that, have we used cinders here?
No, we do not use cinders. No, we use salt.
Okay. Cinders are, it's coal dust. Okay, so any, that's in coal dust, it's going to mean those cinders, or it's coal residue. So there's sulfurs and other, other things. So I, I would suggest that we oppose that. Wait, I'm sorry, what, shoot, I've just lost track of my numbers here because.
While you're looking, are there any other supervisor?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Supervisor Trevino, yes.
I, going back to 24 and 25 that the Resolution Committee opposed, I agree with Doug and Elliot that we should certainly support those two resolutions. And I, I was, I was going to ask the board to, to allow me to support those two resolutions.
Aye.
Because they're certainly a major concern for our current board of supervisors and, and our community members. Going back to what Betsy raised on, Resolution 13 on cinders.
Thank you. Yeah.
Doug, I just wanted to ask, I think the state, doesn't, don't they already approve use of cinders, but there's some restrictions on them? And, and all this resolution does is ask for a removal of the state restrictions.
I was, I'm, I'm not familiar with any of that process. We've, we've always just used straight salt, so never had to get into worrying about other materials.
So I'm.
It doesn't really impact our community since we don't use them. So I'm wondering, Betsy, if, if, since this, you know, doesn't impact us, is it something you want me to argue against?
Yeah. I'm looking out for the whole state. That's all right. I won't support that. The other thing.
Dan, are you finished? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Sorry. Yeah, thanks.
My question was, does the board want me to oppose that resolution from 22-13? And Betsy kind of let me know that she wasn't that strong about it. Any other board members?
Supervisor McGruder, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know enough about it and I'm not sure how many municipalities within the state are actually using it and if there's a specific reason why they are using it. So right now, I would not necessarily oppose that if I agree with making a statement about 24 and 25.
Okay. Supervisor Abrams?
I'll just point out that this issue has been around, around for almost half a century. I think I first heard it brought up in a song by Elvis Presley when he said, return to cinder.
Thank you, Elliot. Supervisor. Supervisor Whitman?
Okay. Yeah, and I'm sure Bradford County wants to use it, which is why they put it, it's a coal resource up there, so they're having coal and it's cheaper and they save money on that.
So.
But it's, I just have some, I also disagree with 22-23 and that PSAT seek legislation to legalize adult use of cannabis provided that allows municipal and land use, sorry, to cease, to, oh, so they're just saying they oppose that and why is this, I just wondered why this is not a township issue because it does not directly impact townships. I think that it, it does, I mean, we're certainly trying to deal with it on the state level. That's the use of cannabis. Legalize, and there are, PSAT is opposing that, so they're seeking legislation, PSAT seek legislation to legalize adult use of cannabis provided such legislation allows municipal land use, decision-making on manufacturing, distribution, and retail facilities, as well as meth consumption to share tax revenues. So why would they oppose that? Why are they recommending to oppose? That's my question.
We, this way.
Well, that would, no, so I, maybe that's why I think I want to oppose it myself. I mean, I want to, I want to disagree with your position. So I would suggest that's my vote there. I think there are a number of other things where the leading came into.
Conservant is not even the right word.
Okay. Any other supervisors like to comment on 2023? 22-23?
And so they're trying to.
Supervisor McGruder?
Yeah, and I don't have this stuff in front of me, so they're, they're proposing to, recommending against the legalization of marijuana.
Yeah, basically.
Yeah.
So I, I'm in favor. So I, that's me as a, first of all, I don't know as a board who want to take a stand on that. I know that the likelihood of it making any waves at PSATs or slipping our opposition, but still, we have a vote.
And so we need to make these decisions today?
Yeah.
Given the meeting?
Supervisor Abrams?
I think that the resolution goes opposite to the way most of the country seems to be heading, and so I'm not in favor of supporting the resolution.
Oh, you want to oppose, you, you're voting to oppose?
The resolution.
As they're saying, okay.
Same, yeah, same.
And the same? Okay.
Dan, you needed your stand. You're on mute.
Requesting resolution. So, yes, I'm concerned. Thank you. This is a, this is a stated federal issue. You know, if, if the township board wishes to take us a public stand and just say, we support, you know, as representatives of our township, citizens, and taxpayers, we support the legalized use, adult use of cannabis, you know, that's, that's one thing I'm not sure that I want to agree to without having a referendum of our township and citizens. You know, this belongs in the state and, and, and the federal legislation. And if you, if you agree to, if you want to support this, you could certainly do that individually and contact your representatives and senators about that. Because I'm not willing.
Yeah.
Personally.
Okay.
To declare that our township citizens support this without some kind of a referendum.
Okay. I'll withdraw that and we can go, because I've got several here and we can spend all our time. It doesn't seem like we have a vote.
Oh, Supervisor Abrams and then Supervisor McGruder.
I would argue that that resolution doesn't belong there.
Then we don't have a vote for it.
It's not, it's not a township issue.
Supervisor McGruder?
I mean, same, so would you recommend then that we don't agree with it being in there?
Well, no. I'm going to drop it because, that's what I was asking, whether you thought it was a township issue. Bucks County obviously does.
But by us not.
Yeah.
Then challenging that, we're basically cosign endorsing that.
Well, we're saying that it doesn't. I was just questioning whether it was a township issue or not.
So. Yeah. The resolutions that get approved by the general membership then go into become.
Lobby.
Lobby, the lobby direction for, for P S A Ts as an organization.
Yeah, so I'm just wanting to have, I'm just wanting to get input into that, which is what they're asking us to do here, so.
Madam Chair. There's no, there's no recording of individual membership votes either.
Okay, Supervisor Trevino, sorry.
Yeah, just, just to quickly summarize the process, because I was your delegate at the fall meeting of P S A Ts when they went through this similar process. What happens is that the head of the Resolutions Committee will, will present this, the whole, all twenty-fifth, all fifty resolutions with the committee's recommendations, either to support or oppose, to the, to the general voting members, say.
Dan, P S A Ts does each one separately, P M L does them all together.
No, I'm just telling you what happened last fall at P S A Ts.
Oh, well, that's a change.
This is what he did, this is what he did last fall. Now, they may not follow the same process, but what he, what he said was, you know, we're presenting all of these. If any individual voting member wishes to, it's like a consent agenda. If any individual member wishes to pull certain resolutions to take action on separately, step to the mic and tell us what numbers those are. And so several of us got up and we said, you know, and he kept track, okay. And so they, those that were pulled, we voted on separately. But the remainder of them that weren't pulled were voted jointly as a consent agenda.
Okay, so I'm going to go on, that's.
Supervisor Whitman is dropping twenty-two thirteen, right?
Yep.
Or twenty-two, twenty-three.
Whatever was on the legalization of marijuana.
Yeah.
Cannabis, so. One thing that I. Oh, it's the prevailing wage, okay, so it's twenty-two dash twenty-eight, twenty-two dash twenty-nine. Okay, and twenty-two dash twenty-eight says that P S A T seeks legislation to amend Pennsylvania prevailing wage law to exclude activities that are currently classified as construction, but were previously classified as low means, from coverage by the act. So I believe very strongly in the prevailing wage law. It brings, it actually improves our community. I get it that it's a little, it's a hardship for many townships, but I strongly believe in that. And the same goes for twenty-two dash twenty-nine. Resolve that P S A T seeks legislation to repeal Pennsylvania prevailing wage law or authorize township to choose whether or not they, whether or not they wish to be subject to provisions of the law. And I strongly disagree, and I get it that other townships may not feel that way, but I also believe that I'm looking at the health and welfare of not just patent township, but surround, surrounding municipalities. And I think that our labor force deserves to be adequately compensated. So I think that once we start chipping away at smaller areas, it's going to affect county also. That's my argument for disagreeing with.
Twenty, twenty-eight and twenty-nine. Okay, any other supervisor agree with?
So it's.
I agree on this, I agree with.
Betsy.
Betsy, yes.
And, and I think there'll be other people at P S A Ts who agree with that, probably more of the more urban areas.
I don't think we should take a stand against paying that minimum wage.
Yeah, I, I don't want to be lobbying for it, that's, I don't want P S A Ts to be lobbying for it, that's all.
Okay.
So maybe we need to take a vote on that?
Do we need to take a vote on that?
I would like to provide direction to this.
No, I just. Supervisor Trevino, did you get?
Uh, I.
We're in support of twenty-two, thirteen, fourteen. Twenty-two, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine. I'm sorry, Supervisor McGruder, where do you stand on twenty-eight and twenty-nine?
No, yeah, I agree with what's been shared here.
Okay, twenty-eight and twenty-nine, we agree with Supervisor Whitman.
I'm still confused about twenty-three.
To opposing, right? Okay?
Yeah. No, that's not, it's very, I'm, I'm sorry about that, but I feel very strongly.
Supervisor Whitman, back to you.
Okay, so Resolution twenty-two forty-nine, we're getting close to the end.
Forty-nine.
So that is to urge redistricting efforts to preserve the principle of one person, one vote, by placing municipalities entirely within the same legislative district as a community of interest in order to avoid situations where individual municipalities are divided into different legislative districts. And there've been a number of mathematical analyses of districting that shows that when you. That the goal to provide one person, one vote, if that is to be attained, it is not to do the divisions I suggested in this resolution, but to do it so that, to try and keep municipalities together, but to do it so that there, you are reducing the, or you're minimizing contours and, and other parameters that I'm not, not readily familiar with. But if you're trying to keep one municipality in a district, or all municipalities in a district, that, one thing that would not be possible in Philadelphia. Philadelphia is too lo, too large, so are many boroughs, or I guess the official cities here in the state. So that's not how it's done. It's, I think this is actually a pretty strong disagreement of fair district legislation.
Okay, any other supervisors want to agree? Oh, Supervisor Abrams.
The difference is that the township boundaries and sizes are so different that I don't think one thing can apply. But for example, in Altoona, if you look at Logan Township, as you're approaching from the, from the northeast on ninety-nine, you're entering Logan Township, you go all the way around the city to the west side and to where Horseshoe Curve is, and it's still Logan Township. They're not, it's not compact.
So are you agreeing with?
Well, I don't think one size fits all, so.
Yeah, I, I, what they're trying to say is, they're trying to present the parameter of keeping municipalities unseparated is, is something that should be.
How many, how many municipalities are there in Pennsylvania?
Twenty-five hundred.
Okay, so how can you possibly draw a map with the number of representatives we actually have? And cater to all twenty-five hundred?
Supervisor Whitman?
Yeah, sorry, sorry, but this parameter is not one that is ever listed by any, as a hard impacts rule by any of the organizations that have studied fair districts. But what they do say is that they make the best attempt to keep municipalities together, but to codify it like this would make it very difficult to do fair districting.
Okay, Supervisor McGruder?
So, yeah, I'd just recommend that we oppose the resolution.
All right, Supervisor Abrams?
Agreed.
Supervisor Trevino, what's your comment?
That's fine.
All right.
That's fine, I will oppose the resolution.
All right.
Thank you, my fellow supervisors.
I also want to oppose twenty-three.
Pardon?
Yeah, we.
Coming back to twenty-three, the marijuana.
No, she pulled it.
She pulled it.
She pulled it, so we.
Choose your battles, I know.
We pulled it, so we have.
I just don't understand what opposing it, what, how, why that's, why that's a major fight. Like, we believe it's up to the states.
No, we didn't oppose it, we, we pulled it, so we're, we're not even.
Well, I, I agree with the.
Oh, yes, you did, I'm sorry.
That other people expressed that it's not a municipal issue. It doesn't, they say the reason they pulled it is that they don't feel that it's a township issue. I, I mean, I think it is, but I'm not gonna, but I'm one of five people on this board, so I'm fine.
Okay, so I'm pulling it, I'm, I'm sorry, Supervisor McGruder? Supervisor Trevino, have you gotten all of this?
Yes, I had my marching orders.
All right. Thank you very much, thank you for your.
Thank you. Moving next on the agenda is the Pennsylvania, Pennsylvania Municipal League Twenty-Two Twenty-Two Leadership Summit, October sixth to October eighth. Doug?
Yeah, they finally announced the dates and the location, so I wanted to reach out to the board and see who might be planning to attend. I can send out an email tomorrow and get. But as normally, we need to make hotel reservations early on, so I'll reach out. It's downtown Pittsburgh. Notice, as I noted in the agenda, most of the, majority of the program will take place on Friday. If you're looking to not be there the whole time, Friday is the day where most of the stuff takes place.
Okay, Doug, can we give you our decision at our next board meeting?
Yeah, I can, or I'll send out an email.
Okay.
You can just respond to me, but. I want to get that on your, on your plate.
On our radar, great. All right, next on the agenda is the Management Manager's Annual Energy Efficiency Update.
Yeah, this, we started this in twenty-eleven.
It's so amazing.
Based on council government's efforts back then. And I'll just, you know, I included the, the highlights of the changes that we've done here in the last, last year. Betsy was, Betsy Whitman was instrumental in pushing the solar power purchasing effort along with the becoming a partner in the Sun United Neighbors effort. That's a co-op that's working to encourage people to place solar panels on their roofs and also install E V charging stations. Other things, we began work on Phase Two of Circleville Bike Way. That was just, we've just been working on that, started working on that. We did some more bike issues, we put markings, shared the road on Devonshire Drive. We're sponsoring a grant for a signal upgrade to Atherton Corridor, which will remove, which should reduce congestion and delay, and therefore makes cars run more efficiently in the corridor and reduce emissions, and adopted a sustainability goals resolution. Do you remember anything else we did? We can add it to the list.
The police car.
All right, Supervisor Abrams?
Police car.
One that might be added, we got that letter about the deterioration of the rail trail section suggesting that we want to acquire it so that we can make sure it's fixed properly?
Yeah, we have acquired that section. Public Works was going to go out and make repairs to it.
Okay, all right, so.
And then we'll look at more upgrades as part of our capital improvement program later this year.
Okay, is there any other supervisor that want to speak on this subject?
You got the police car, add the police car.
Oh, yeah.
That's a big.
The hybrid.
Yeah, it's a big step for us.
All right, next on the agenda is the electric power supply contract. Doug?
Yeah, we've been lucky for many years now that we've had really low power prices. There is, there's a typo in the first paragraph, it's not forty-eight cents per kilowatt hour, it's four point eight cents per kilowatt hour is what we've been paying for the last year. We haven't paid, we've paid less than six percent, six cents a kilowatt hour probably for the last ten years, as long as we've been doing these, these multiple-year contracts. But we're in a completely different environment, pricing environment today. And the prices, you saw, you can see the prices that we've been quoted for the various contracts. I won't go through all of those, the prices change slightly from day to day. And based on what we end up, just what you all end up deciding tonight, I, I'll have to get new pricing tomorrow and sign a contract by the end of the day if we need, if that's where we go. But I think Larry and I looked at it, we talked to our consultant with Premier Power, our broker. She gave us some additional information. And Larry and I give you two options to, to look at. One is the ground energy option, which is going to default pricing from West Penn Power. It's currently six and a half cents a kilowatt hour. Probably go up to somewhere between eight and nine in June, and it'll stay there for the next three months. So that's the lowest cost option that we can do. And we'd look at redoing something then again before the end of the next quarter, or three months from now. The other, the other green, the lowest cost green option, or at least the lowest cost in the short run, would go to a six-month renewable contract at the, somewhere around ten and a half cents a kilowatt hour. Yeah, ten point, ten point four, five. For a six-month contract, then again, start looking again in, in four or five months to see what the market looks like at that point. That's probably going to cost about fifteen percent more than the brown, the brown option. So I'll leave it at that, and if you have questions, I'll try to answer them. I learned more about the power market in the last five days.
Supervisor Whitman?
So the, you, Larry, help me out here, when the solar power purchase agreement, the earliest that we would be hooked up to that?
We're looking at, well, we're looking at in the absolute best-case scenario, it's going to be a year, a year and a half.
Gotcha.
We have to build the solar project, if we don't find something that's already built that nobody's, that's available, then we're talking about two and a half, three.
Thank you, I just, I have a. So we're, you're, sorry, you're recommending the shorter term because the market is so volatile? And you think it, there's a possibility it might go down?
Yeah.
Is that why you don't want to lock in?
This is where we look into our crystal balls and try to predict what the cost of power will be six, twelve, twenty-four months from now. Larry and I both think it's going to go down, so let's not lock in at a high price for a long time. Noted, the twelve-month contract is about the same price as, as the six-month contract. So you'd have, you go out to twenty-four months to get, you know, nine and a half cents, or thirty-six months, eight and a half, eight point eight. You know, in three years, do you want to be paying eight point eight when it's back down to five or something like that? That's, that's, yeah, that's why we, we're not looking at anything long-term at this point. The market is just so volatile and so. Ukraine, the war in Ukraine is, is one of the factors influencing this. So again, I just say we can, we're going to pay more in the short term, we know that for sure. But can we start getting some lower prices before twenty-four months are up? That's the question.
Supervisor Abrams?
So what you're saying is we shouldn't short-circuit our, our whole budget by plugging into a long-term contract?
Yes, sir.
Supervisor Trevino?
Thank you.
Thank you. Just FYI to the board, I talked to Doug this afternoon with some questions about this, and one of the things he mentioned was his estimate of the percent of the brown energy option that is coming from renewables. So, Doug, would you reiterate for the board?
Yeah, it's, the normal portfolio that if you just go to the default pricing, they, some of the, most of the power comes from coal-generated and other things, but they are by state law required to provide part of the power from renewable sources, which includes solar, wind, and hydro. So, I, and I have to go back and look, but I think it's somewhere around 17% of that mix of what I calling brown is actually renewable energy. So, I mean, any contract that's not 100% renewables is gonna have that, that as part of it.
Okay. Supervisor, Trevino, are you finished? I'm sorry, sir.
Doug, well, let me, let me just say, if, if the board feels strongly about supporting renewables at, you know, knowing that it's gonna cost our budget a little bit higher, that's, that's fine. Personally, though, I don't have a problem with a, with a short-term, you know, six months or less, or just going quarter by quarter with the brown energy option. Knowing that we're eventually going to be a partner in the solar power purchase agreement, we'll set up and running.
Okay. Supervisor McGrueder?
No comments.
All right. Supervisor Whitman? I'm sorry.
Thanks, yeah. So, I did some quick math on decisions that we made recently, well, actually in February. And one was for the police cruiser, the police car, I'm not sure what brand it is, where we agreed to pay $36,700 over $33,700, and, you know, that wasn't too much of a hard choice, but I did some percentages, and we chose something that's 8.2% higher to go green. And then, of course, the next item in that agenda in February was to look at them at zero-turn mower, and again, the prices were $10,000 versus $27,000, and to go with the $27,000, there would've been 162% higher. So, that, that was all.
Okay.
Decision. So, the decision here is 15%. I was hoping that it was gonna be closer to, you know, 10% higher. In my, there's no question that I would vote to go with the green. I may be the only vote, but I.
Okay. Supervisor Abel? I'm sorry.
In terms of total dollars spent for electricity, say, over the six-month period, what actually are we talking about? What are the differences in totals? That might.
It's probably a couple thousand dollars at this point for three months, but it's not like 10, 20, 30,000. No. No, I think it, well, it was like 23,000 for the whole year, if we went all the way up to 10.5 cents, so. Can I just say for the quarter? Let's say for the quarter, it's a quarter of that, so 4,000, 4,500. And then it kind of depends where this default pricing ends up, which we don't know what exactly what it'll be for two months.
Can I make a suggestion that we go with the option one?
It's the lower-cost one?
Mm-hmm.
I'll second that.
Option one is the brown?
Yeah. And it's the recommendation from township?
It's one of two recommendations.
And it's a short-term?
Short-term.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, well, like I said, we'll be back in July asking probably the same question again. The numbers may be slightly different, but I think the question's gonna be probably fairly similar. But, you know, the last time we signed a contract, the, I think the differential between the brown and the green was less than 2%, so we went green.
Okay.
And, you know, now it's 4% to 5%, except in this, you know, we're, we're not really comparing apples and oranges in these two choices, but they're close to apples and apples as I can get you.
Thank you. Supervisor Abel?
I could think of one place where we could actually, should actually have, see a solar array installed, and that's cover up our pyrite deposits that are now covered by plastic, put solar panels there. So, at least it's useful.
Yeah, Alex is working on getting some pricing on solar panels, and Larry and I actually joked about maybe it was cheaper to use our own generator than sending out one back.
Okay.
Probably really not.
Supervisor Trevino, you made your decision?
Yeah, it's fine with me going with option one, and then reviewing the whole thing again in July to see if maybe the difference between 100% renewables and brown are, has shrunk some, where, you know, it makes more sense to go ahead and pay the, a smaller premium to get 100% renewables.
Okay. Supervisor Abel?
I, this is maybe a red herring, but I brought, I brought this up at the, when they were discussing the State College Connector. And in the future, there are supposedly going to be these large arrays of solar, and actually it'll be almost like solar power plants, but you'll need to have the infrastructure to send the power through. And what better place than to install those cables or whatever you need in the roadway underneath this new road before it's paved over? It could be actually a demonstration project for the country, because eventually, that's, seems to me that's what's going to happen. In order to charge all of the vehicles, how are you gonna get all the power most efficiently to the places where people are gonna be charging their vehicles? And it seems that there should be sources close to the roadways where people are gonna be driving those electric cars, and.
So, what is your decision?
Well, I don't, my, my decision with, with what we're doing, I don't have any, I don't feel strongly about it. It's just that, I just wish some of these newer ideas could actually work, because they're not, we're not gonna have another chance to build this four-lane highway again.
Okay. We have two, and we have one undecided. Sutan, which way are you?
Oh, mine was the short-term, the brown, the brown energy.
That was three, and one for option.
I'm option two.
Option two.
I'll go option one.
So, okay, we got four to one. Doug?
Give me what I need.
All right.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Doug?
Just the two items, minutes from last meeting and voucher report for last month.
Okay. Can I get a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Motion to accept.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Moving on, next on the agenda is the Manager, Manager's Report. Doug?
Getting there.
Sorry, moving there.
Couple pieces of correspondence. We had an update from Department of Environmental Protection about the PFAs, I'm not gonna try to pronounce what PFAs means really, but it's a substance in the groundwater near the airport that the EP is monitoring and tracking. The latest correspondence said they were doing some testing at home wells around the area. I did get a summary of that testing, and there were no, they found no elevated levels in any of the homes in Patton Township. There were some elevated levels in homes in Bennett Township, but not Patton Township. So, and also then, the second item under correspondence was the, Center County is gonna use part of their American Rescue Plan money to cover shortfalls in the cost at the Central Booking Center, which is where everybody who's arrested and needs to be arraigned all end up at the county jail at Center Bookings Center, and they are fingerprinted and processed. We did provide and make a payment to keep that center running, and that's gonna be refunded to us, so I've noted the county picked up, is picking up the tab on that. Spring newsletter came out, and should've all gotten, my copy arrived last week, so you should've all gotten your copy. Pretty standard. This is probably the last one that Doug will do, and hopefully, next one Sophie will do.
Right.
I bet you'll notice a difference. Final, again, remind everybody that summer trash schedule is gonna change to 6:00 AM start from Memorial Day to Labor Day. This is a pilot program to see how it works, and then, over the winter, then we'll make a decision about next summer. Township office schedule, we're closed on April 15th, which is Good Friday, and we'll also be doing carpet cleaning, closed May 30th. Note there was a flyer involved, included in the agenda for hazardous, household hazardous waste collection, like you need to pre-register for that, so please go to the Center County Recycling and Refuse website, do that if you have household hazardous waste you need to dispose of. Bulk waste collection is week of May 9th. Senator Gill's campaign is May 10th and 11th. Primary election is May 18th. End of my report.
Okay. Thank you, Doug. Moving on, next on the agenda is committee reports. Is there any supervisor that would like to add to their committee report at this time? Supervisor Abel?
I didn't actually submit a report, but the main idea at the Land Use and Infrastructure Committee from Jim May about the planning process is that they're going to use a different approach, where they're going to look at more broad issues in planning rather than trying to do all the little details that have been done in the past. I think that has some upsides and downsides. For example, we've been able to curtail sprawl with the growth boundary, and that's been a highly detailed kind of thing. If that kind of thing becomes more generalized, maybe it'll be harder to go with that, and so the whole pattern will change. So, I don't know if everything should go that way, unless you want it to go that way. But, I don't know, and we've had arguments at the COG meetings about, like, I remember when they wanted to build that church near Oldsburg, and it, it was outside the growth area just by happenstance. It happened to be an undeveloped area previously to that, and all the adjacent properties were within the growth area because they had houses on them already, but that one was like open land, and there was an argument about whether we should just draw a line straight across so that it would be in the growth boundary, or be strict about it and not let it be in. And that took up months of acrimonious debate.
Well, thank you. Supervisor Trevino? Barney, do you have anything else?
Well, we're meeting tomorrow morning.
Okay. Supervisor McGrueder?
Yeah, in the Human Resources Committee, I didn't submit the report for that either, but I think the main focus there was looking at the COLA, as well as the, I forget what they call them, general salary increases. I don't know what y'all call them here, but basically looking at these, these raises over, over the next fiscal year, and looking amongst the municipalities, it seemed like the, the percentages was, was in a sort of stratosphere in some of these spaces, almost, you know, 7, 8% for, for some of the municipalities, and so there's some discussion about the need for making sure we compensate our government employees while at the same time recognizing that that money, again, is coming from somewhere, you know, the taxpayers, and, you know, giving the, I don't wanna say novelty, but the novelty, I guess, of the current, you know, situation that we're in right now with recession and stuff like that, while, again, there's a push to, you know, make sure we're, we're compensating effectively for also recruitment purposes, that in the grand scheme of things, you know, this, this isn't something that's gonna last, you know, forever, and there had been things put in place prior to this time to account for, you know, situations like this. And so, yeah, just more discussions that we're gonna be having, you know, as COG regarding these, these increases.
Okay. Thank you. Supervisor Whitman? Do you have anything?
No, I'll just submit something next week.
All right. I know public safety was canceled, and my executive board meeting is not until next week. So, moving on, other business. CNN, next on the agenda is the adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Can I, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I just said it.
All right. Can I get a second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
No? Any opposed?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. This meeting is now adjourned.